One, two, three, one, two, three. That's one, two, three. Pretty good.
Hello? Yeah?
Yes, that's true. Oh, sushi.
All right. Seven o'clock. I know we just got seated, but let's call the order and have the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. We have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and then next item is 3.3, which is our public comment. Speakers may address any subject concerning Liberty Public Schools, Board of Education, or, and/or education, sorry. Board members will not engage in debates or discussions with those speaking other than to seek clarification of their comments. Speakers will address the board from the podium, are asked to keep remarks concise and to the point, and will not repeat what someone before has said. A person or persons may speak only once at the meeting if several patrons wish to speak on the same topic. The board president may restrict the input to one or two spokespersons. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Profane language or comments that constitute a threat to the safety of others is prohibited. Spontaneous comments from the audience will not be tolerated and may close public comment. In the event board members agree the normal flow of business is being unnecessarily delayed, they may by majority vote, waive, or end public comment. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, usually within a week, and this is all part of, consistent with our board policy, VDDH dash one, public participation at board meetings. And Denise, I don't know if we have any, so I just read all of that, just because.
It's a good reminder.
There we go! So, why not? So, okay.
Good breakfast.
Well, so item four is our consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member.
I move the board approve consent agenda items 4.1 through 4.7.
Second. Whenever you're ready, Denise. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. That should give us the administration reports. I think it's coming up to do the four, three.
So, next up, we have our reports from administration, and we'll start off with 5.1, and that is a report from Innovation and Learning.
Good evening. I feel like I usually have a little bit more time to get situated in your race.
We're giving Dallas a break.
Oh, gosh, yeah. Well, summer school is wrapping up this week with just under 6,000 students. And we have Madagascar Junior that is, was being presented today and tomorrow, if you have time to go and see that, at Liberty North tomorrow. And we presented you a summer school report with our Innovation and Learning reports. And one of the most exciting things that was in there was that students are still checking out books, which I think is really cool. There were a lot of books being checked out this summer, which I love to see. Innovation and Learning wanted to just say thank you to everyone in Human Resources and Operations Department who really helped pull off summer school. Some of our usual sites, as we've shared, were not available because of some of the just different projects, and so we had to kind of pivot and use our middle schools for elementary, but it's gone great. I was over at South Valley today seeing some of the elementary kids, and they're doing a great job. So, thank you to everyone for that. Also going on this summer, we have been working with principals. We had a retreat with them last week, started to look at the strategic plan, tie our building improvement plan to that new strategic plan we've been working on, still having a focus on our math and literacy, as well as looking at real-world learning, artificial intelligence, obviously implementing School Links K-5, so now having that K-12 focus with School Links. And then we were able to welcome some new faces to our administrative team, so that was a great day of learning. I'm sure that Dr. Tucker will mention this in his report, that we were able to spend a couple of days with Education Reimagine, wrapping up that cohort, and it was just humbling to be a part of that cohort and be the only K-12 school district, a part of that work over this past year. And we were able to do an exhibit, and our exhibit was being a learner-centered, a learner-centered journey from Epic to every graduate, and we were able to focus on every graduate having a market value asset this past year. And now we look forward to our work with Carnegie and the Future of High School Network, which I know starts here in the next couple of days. And our team is now working on preparation for Summit 53, formerly NTII, and pre-service, which is just around the corner. Dallas and I were just talking about that. We're like, it's the end of June, July is here, and August will be here before we know it. But that is all I have for you tonight. If you have any questions, I'll take those.
Questions for Dr. Moore? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
5.2, then, Student Equity and Access Report. Dr. Dixon Seehorn is unable to be here this evening, so you have her information that is provided for your review. You can certainly entertain any questions and relay those to her, because I probably won't have the answer to questions, but do present that information to you this evening. Any questions to pass along to Dr. Dixon Seehorn?
I didn't have any.
5.3 is our finance report, and we will welcome Cindy Sullivan to the podium multiple times tonight, so this is round one, Cindy.
Round one, here we go. Good evening. I have two donations to present to you tonight. An anonymous donation of a Casey Strings full-size base valued at $1,000 to the Fine Arts Department for student rentals, and a monetary donation of $2,000 from the Preshon Family Charitable Gift Fund to Liberty High School Men's Tennis Program. So, I thank both of those donors for their generous gifts to our district. Tonight, in addition to my report, I wanted to talk just briefly about the revenue picture for the current year and one item for next year. The personal property tax, great year. Collections were up overall. We collected 100.42% of amounts levied. That's everything we levied, not budgeted. We traditionally budget a little bit less than what's levied because we know the collection rate historically is about 98%. So, to collect 100% of that was something that happens about every five years, and this happened to be that fifth year, and so we're very, very happy to report that income into the system. The foundation formula for this year, as you know, the state adequacy target was scheduled to be 6,760. Last week, we were informed that the state did not have enough revenue to meet that call on the budget. So, instead of 6,760 per weighted ADA, we're only going to get 6,700 and, make sure I get the number right, I'm not going to get it right. Yep, 6,749, which is not far off from 6,760, but it does leave us with a shortfall of a little over $131,000 for foundation formula revenue this year. And as you know, when I presented the budget for next year, we talked about that revenue, and even though the state budgeted for, the state appropriation is going to be higher than what we budgeted, it's for scenarios like this that we are taking that wait and see approach. Because even though the state had an additional supplemental appropriation, we still had a shortfall in state revenue to meet the call on the foundation formula. So, I feel pretty good about what we're doing for next year as well, but I didn't want to pass that information on to you. And the main shortfall came in lottery revenue, gaming revenue, and cigarette tax, so.
So, we need to start advertising?
Yeah, good question, so.
Do you know that, do you know the aggregate, the aggregate, like, loss in revenue for the state?
They did not give us that information, and I did not look to see what it was, but I can get that if you'd like them.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Is that why they raised lottery prices?
To make a shortfall? So, anyway, I wanted to pass that on to you. And then in the last couple of weeks, there's been quite a bit of chatter about the federal programs income. And some districts have seen a great decrease in their allocations. We fortunately were not one of them. Ours is still in line with what our census poverty is doing, so I wasn't too alarmed about the other districts throwing up red flags because we really didn't have one there. We don't, however, know all of our federal allocations, so that's another thing that's going on. They're not releasing that information as timely as they once did, so I don't even know what some of them are. But the ones we do have are right in line with where I thought we would be based on census poverty and where we've been in the past, so that's a good thing for us. One other note that I wanted to pass on as far as revenue for this coming year, they have not paid out all of our Title I allocation, early childhood special education allocations, and Title, or pardon me, IDEA. So, they're a little slow at getting that revenue. We're being told that the revenue will be passed through once they get it from the federal government, and that we will get it. We have not heard that we will not get it, so it's just going to be in next year instead of this year, as it was budgeted. So, that will just kind of tip the scale a little bit, and what our fund balance could look like this year may change then for next year. And it also affects cash flow, so it's about a million, $1.6 million that we've had to jockey some investments to cover payrolls for this week because we pay June, early July, and early August balance of contracts, so there's a big pull on cash this week. So, we were keeping track of it, so there's nothing to worry about. Have not been informed that we won't get it. Timing is just a little bit different than we expected on some of that. That's all I wanted to tell you about the revenue picture for this year. I also wanted to let you know that the Audit and Finance Committee did review the finances this month. They not have anything to pass on to you. That's what I've got tonight.
Any questions of Ms. Sullivan?
Okay.
Thank you. Next is 5.4, and our operations report with Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. Just a few things to really port on, point off the report, and then some things to add to that. First is, as you'll notice, especially in the facilities area of the report, that team went by Steve Aldrich, Kevin Pace, the maintenance manager, Justin Preston, project manager, and Clayton Smith, who's our custodial manager. The amount of work and coordination that takes place over the course of the summer is rather extraordinary, and that's in the midst of all the construction and everything, so you did want to just recognize them tonight and the work that they do. In addition to that, wanted to indicate or share that the kids' own summer camp, which begins July 7th, so that's after summer school, that's July 7th to August 1st. We have over 400 students signed up for that, so we're excited to kind of roll right into that program. It'll take us right up until pretty close to the start of school. Quick construction update, especially the bigger projects that are winding down. The distribution center is now open. They have fully moved in. It's quite the site. If you get a chance, I'd encourage you to pop in. They're always happy to take a visitor, and you can really kind of see it in its full glory, and it's pretty impressive. So, thank you all for your support of that project. And then the other two biggies that are wrapping up right now are South Valley and Discovery Middle Schools. South Valley looks to be wrapping up. We expect occupancy by the middle of July and then end of July for DMS. So, all that is looking great and right on schedule. Last thing I wanted to share, a little bit of a tougher one for us, but as I think all you know, Kathy Ellemeyer is, she's got one week from today, will be her last day with us. She started with us 23 years ago. 19 years she served as a Director of Health Services for the school district. What I like to point out, and I think I may point out this last year with the retirement of Mr. Majors, we have a handful of folks on operations, and Kathy's one. We've got a couple more, Trey Cottzer, Jason Bright, Steve Aldrich, and certainly Kathy, who really are, were founders of that program. There was not a program before they arrived, and so I really wanted to recognize her for her dedicated service, long career, and she is about as committed to this place as anybody. I think everybody here could attest. She, she feels it real. It's real to her, and supporting the kids and supporting her team is, you know, the calling of her life, and I just wanted to thank her for her service and recognize her tonight. So, that's what I had. If you have any questions.
Questions of Mr. Anderson.
I don't have a question, but just would also like to echo thanks for all of the team that is putting all of that work in at all of the projects around the district. It is amazing. I would like, I think it would be fun for us to go on a playground recess tour once those playgrounds are all put in place, because they look like so much fun if you go look at the, all the different ones that are going to be in place at the elementary school. And then also thanks for Kathy Ellemeyer for appreciation for all of her service.
Well, that's my objective, you're properly insured.
Can we do the recess tour when it's cool?
Yes, oh, well, I would agree with that. They've got to be installed first, so.
One quick update. I just happened to drive by Heritage today, and it looks like a really interesting project going on there.
Very bold. Inside and out, head foundational. It's, yeah, there's a lot going on. It'll be a very busy, hot summer there.
But we're still looking forward to starting school there?
We will definitely start school. It will be inconvenient, but they're kind of used to that there.
Yeah.
Messaging is key. Have there been any, have they got in to the foundation enough to see if there's any problem?
They did. Yeah, I think it's much of what they had anticipated, and so they're kind of getting after the work that was approved all a couple of months ago. Nothing beyond what they had, that they had discovered back a couple of months ago.
Kind of an old building.
Little bit.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Next then is 5.5, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Marriott for our Human Resources report.
Good evening. I have some staffing updates for you to begin with. We are doing exceptionally well still with our certificated openings. Right now, we have 6.5 FTEs open to be yet filled for the upcoming school year, but we are confident that through our recruitment efforts that we will have those fully staffed by the time we start school. We do have several classified vacancies, which is typical at this time of year. The majority of those openings are school age care and then paraprofessionals, but we've made several offers over the past two weeks to fill those vacancies, and then our team is working to advertise in a variety of recruitment platforms, and so we are also confident that we will have the majority of those filled by the time we begin the school year. A little bit of data regarding the number of certificated teachers that are exiting LPS as compared to years prior, so we are seeing a slight increase, which is expected because we're seeing the increase in the number of teachers who are leaving the district with 16 or more years of experience. And so, it's that first kind of wave of retirement that we anticipated, and we think that that will increase next year and then the following year as well. And so, we will continue to monitor that and make sure that we are putting efforts and pieces in place to ensure that we have, and are prepared for that in the future. A bit of an update for Team Liberty, so as you know, our facilitator, Michelle Baldwin, retired at the conclusion of the Team Liberty year this year. So, requests for proposals closes this Wednesday. We will collaborate with Jason Bright. He will facilitate that process and then help us determine what our next steps are. We anticipate that that will likely include a series of interviews that involve a representative sample from Team Liberty as well as cabinet members, but I'll keep you guys posted on those developments as, as they become available to us. And then we had an initial benefits review meeting on June 4th with Holmes Murphy, so we reviewed our utilization data for this past school year. We received preliminary cost projections, and we examined the history of healthcare plans and the navigation of changes over the years at Liberty Public Schools, and we will have more information to share in the near future regarding that topic as well. And then I would like to conclude, I want to invite Dr. Leah Poplin up to the podium and just share with you all a brief update regarding our Grow Your Own Teachers program. So, as you know, the Grow Your Own Teacher program is part of our district's strategic efforts to address a national shortage in high-quality teachers and teaching candidates, and our primary focus of the program is to identify and cultivate aspiring educators from among our own high school students here at Liberty Public Schools. So, that vision started in 2016 when LPS was introduced to Missouri's plan to ensure equitable access. access to excellent educators. And the first cohort of four GYOT award recipients was introduced to the Liberty Public Schools' Board of Education in May of 2019. So I want to just briefly recognize our steering committee members, and then I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Copeland to introduce this year's recipient. So we have an ongoing steering committee that meets periodically to review the progress, conduct interviews, review applications, and then make any suggested revisions to that plan moving forward. And those members are Dr. Bridgette Herman, Dr. Carrie Marcantonio, Kristelle Morgan, Colleen Jones, Dr. Andrea Dixon Sehorn, Dr. Tanika Brown, Dr. Lee Allen, Ms. Melissa Taylor, Dr. Mike Sharp, Dr. Rosemary Camp, myself, and Dr. Copeland. So I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Copeland to introduce this year's recipient.
Good evening, everyone. This year, we have seven future college students who comprise our GYOT 25-26 cohort. And I have the joy and honor of interviewing each of them on Zoom, and it's a great group of future educators to present to you tonight. So if you would just stand and come forward so the board can see you as I call your name, I'm going to tell you who they are and where they're going to college and as of this moment, what their area of study is as far as becoming a future teacher. So first, we have Addison Birkenhold. She is going to be going to Northwest Missouri State. She is a Liberty High School graduate, and she'll be going to Maryville to study elementary education. So congratulations to that. Then next, we have Lillian Bryant, who is going to be going, she's a Liberty North graduate, and she is going to be going to the University of Central Missouri in Warrensburg, Missouri, studying secondary math education. Next, we have Catalina Eddy. She is going to be going to Truman State in Kirksville, Missouri, studying elementary education in the fall. Then we have Lydia Chris, and she is going to be going to K-State, to Kansas State University in Manhattan, studying elementary education as well. And then we have Madison Lowe, who is not able to join us this evening, a Liberty North graduate, going to Maplewood's Community College to begin her college career and studying elementary education as well. And then Jasmine Mesa. She is going to be going to Maplewood's Community College. She's a Liberty North graduate and will be studying elementary education. And then Samira Shaw. She's going to be going to Lincoln University in Jefferson City, Missouri, studying instrumental music education. So these are six of our seven recipients for the upcoming cohort. I also want to point out that Addison, Catalina, Lydia, Madison, and Jasmine were all part of the LPS Educational Internship Program, EIP, as well during their senior year. So they had a lot of good experience already in our Liberty classroom. So congratulations to all of you.
And I'll take any questions that you guys have.
The 219 initial class, so where are they at in the district now? You know where some of them, at least some of them are.
Tricky question.
I know that we have one teaching social studies. We have an elementary education teacher. We have one who will be teaching Spanish with us next year at the high school. I'm trying to remember where.
Music?
Yes, yes. We have a music educator who are currently placed with us.
For next year, yes. Oh, all together? Yes, we have five currently this year, the year that we just finished, and two more coming ahead.
Wow.
They're filling positions.
That's fantastic.
Other questions of Dr. Marriott?
I just, not a question, but I just, again, I love seeing the emphasis on leadership development within the organization, like especially with the classified, not the sort of, the classified, that launch program. It's been really interesting to read about that and see the growth of that and to read about what they found valuable in terms of the speaking that was really interesting to hear about.
Yes, we're excited to be able to offer that again next year.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Marriott. What you may not have noticed behind Dr. Marriott was our students taking selfies with Dallas. As they exited. I want to start by thanking Mr. Gates for sticking around for my report. It's not that exciting.
That's what he's here for.
But no, congratulations to our Grow Your Own Teacher recipients, and we appreciate Dr. Copeland for leading that and wish them well. It'll be fun to watch them over the coming years. Couple of things that I was going to share have been mentioned already as it relates to wrapping up our year-long experience with the Ecosystem Lab through Education Reimagined. And so appreciate Dr. Moore and others from our Innovation and Learning Department in participating in that experience over the course of this year. As that sun sets, we transition into the Carnegie Foundation work. This week actually, a small team of us will be traveling to California to begin that process. Dr. Camp, Dr. Sharp, myself, we'll bring others into the work as we go. This is just that preliminary kickoff this week as it relates to the High School Transformation Network. Another item I wanted to share regarding our learning network would be the Success Ready Students Network and our submission of the federal waiver around assessment. That was submitted back in May with the help of DESI submitting that to the U.S. Department of Education in anticipation that we will receive notice sometime in August as to whether or not that is approved. In the meantime, we'll be in Washington, D.C. mid-July with our summer legislative advocacy work that we do each year, and that will be a topic of conversation to bring up with our Missouri delegation, just to make sure that they're aware of our submission and anything that they can do to support that application. A couple of additional items. Appreciate the mention around summer school in terms of our 6,000, nearly 6,000 students served over the course of the month of June. Others that will continue on into July and services as it relates to extended school year and special education support for those students and families. Additionally, we're walking through kind of the debrief of the legislative session and all that transpired this last legislative session to make sense of a variety of bills impacting public education. The one to make note of is Senate Bill 68 that ended up being the omnibus bill that has a lot packed in there. And so we were actually on the phone with Missouri School Boards Association earlier this afternoon. In addition to the updates that you have on your agenda this evening, you're going to see another round of updates in July that then we can put in place as we think about the start of the 25-26 school year. The last thing that I wanted to mention is that the Governor's Task Force for School Modernization and as it relates to funding, held their second meeting today. The first one was back in June, June 3rd. Today was the second one, so I made a quick trip to Jefferson City. Lasted about two hours. We're pivoting then into work groups and assigning individuals to work groups. The work groups are on the subjects of funding targets, student counts, local effort factors, and then performance incentives. And it's anticipated that those work groups will begin their work this month in July, continue to engage over the course of the next couple of months. And we have a meeting, our next full task force meeting is scheduled September, September 9th, I believe. So we'll continue to keep you informed as to that work moving forward. But again, that is about a year and a half worth of information gathering, but then also soliciting feedback from a variety of stakeholders that then culminates in recommendations to the Governor's Office. So more to come on that front. With that said, would open it up for any questions that you all may have of me this evening. Performance incentives was the fourth one. I was, they gave assignments today, and so I am part of the Funding Targets Committee in terms of task force members assigned to that. There's about three to four task force members on each of those work groups. In addition, they're bringing in additional stakeholders to serve as experts, so to speak. And so you have those that are familiar with school finance or, you know, individuals that are engaged in policy development, some staffers and so forth that will also support those work groups moving forward.
Generally speaking, what would be local factors? I mean, there's obvious things, but I'm just curious.
The majority of that has to deal with property taxes as far as our local effort and how that fits into the calculation of the current formula, but then also looking at how other states approach that. And that we are beginning to learn more and more about other states' funding processes, whether it's a similar formula or something completely different. So I think each of those committees will likely have some degree of, you know, lens in and around what other states are doing and then bringing that information back to see if that might fit here or if we pursue something completely different. Linda Quinley is part of, she will be assigned, I'm not sure which work group she's part of yet. They haven't announced those experts yet in what work groups they'll be working on. She has been present at the last two meetings. For those of you that don't know Linda Quinley, years ago, she was the CFO in Columbia Public Schools. More recently, she was, I believe, CFO in KCPS, Missouri side, retired officially from her CFO role, but is now working as a finance consultant with Missouri School Boards Association. So she's a well-known finance expert, so.
And how much would the performance group be looking at Success Ready Student Network as a?
I asked that today in a similar fashion in terms of broadening our definition of performance and achievement beyond what traditionally we would think it to be. So that seed was planted. We'll see as far as how that kind of informs recommendations. The other piece to think about, not only does performance part of our current calculation, right, in terms of those top performing districts that then inform the calculation and the SAT and so forth. Keep in mind, you may also have targets, performance incentive targets, that if a district obtains or reaches those particular targets, it comes with additional revenue. So it's really twofold. The achievement, performance piece as it relates to a formula calculation, but then also might we can center some additional incentives as it relates to more funding? We'll see how all that plays out over the course of the next year and a half.
I'm searching my memory. Was it Success Ready? Was there a discussion about how many, did you mention how many, the percentage of districts that are involved and what that number was?
No, I didn't this evening. That's grown. We're pushing 70 that will be part of the waiver request.
70% of 70 school districts?
No, 70 school districts.
Okay.
Yeah. We have some additional LEAs, charter schools involved as well. There's a third wave, third round of districts pursuing an innovation waiver, which will get us closer to that 60-70. But then that's in the system design zone, the districts that are all-in with the state waiver. There's what's referred to as a learning design zone, a little confusing, for those districts that aren't quite ready for all-in and that they're learning, they're experimenting, maybe they have pockets of this work happening across their systems. By the time you couple that, all those districts together, you're well over 100. That represents a significant number of students in the state of Missouri.
So is that making meaningful?
I think so.
In my mind, it does.
Yeah, for sure. Because of the collective learning, the collaboration, and the fact that this is being led from the field, right? You have much of this happening from the field. Because by themselves, I'll say it, DESI wouldn't necessarily have the capacity to do it solely by themselves. So it's been a good collaboration, which then gets you into some of the funding pieces. You know, as you think about funding and you think about the possibility of how a formula winds up in Missouri, you know, additional choice options and so forth, that kind of limits that collaborative spirit potentially if we're not mindful. And gets us into more of a competitive space. So we're all for collaboration in that, you know, a rising tide rises all ships, right? And so we're trying to keep that front and center as we walk through those conversations.
I would assume those 70 districts represent a larger proportion of students as opposed to just the sheer number of districts.
Yeah, it's well over 50%. Because you have, you have a variety. You have urban, suburban, subrural, but then you also have rural. So you have some as few as a couple hundred kids in their local school district in their rural community, all the way to some of your larger systems in the metropolitan areas. So, and more being added as we pursue this next round of innovation waivers.
Back to the task force. 16 members?
I believe that's right.
And two practitioners of education out of that 16?
That is correct. Yeah. You have some others that are.
Sorry, just a question.
Pointed. Where you have some that have experience, like education backgrounds. And even some of our legislators, many of you may know Rusty Black. He is the Chair of the Committee. He was a 33-year veteran, act teacher, I believe, from Mowley or Chillicothe. Chillicothe, thank you. Kind of up in that area. So you have some folks that, you know, understand K-12 space, but as far as existing sitting practitioners, Mr. Marriott's correct, it's very limited with just two of us. We'll certainly keep you posted as this progresses. So good conversations thus far.
Thank you.
All right, well then we're on to item six with unfinished business and the big time
budget. Is this one ever finished business? Never. I think that's what we've been told.
Until she leaves the podium, it's finished.
For the day.
Thank you again. Tonight, we bring the completed budget for your approval. I would be remiss if I didn't once again thank all of the people involved in its preparation. The number is vast, and that means the Business Services Department, all budget managers, and all cabinet, Dr. Tucker, and anyone else in the building that might have their hand in a budget. Lots of work, lots of hours, and I appreciate everyone's input in this document. As a review, in March, we talked about the revenue budget. Then in April, we reviewed the expenditure budget. And then May, we brought you a proposed preliminary budget. And tonight, there are two documents posted for you. One is the completed budget document, and the second one is a document that shows you what changed from a preliminary budget that you saw in May. Changes to revenue were small. We decreased projected revenue by $16,486 by the things that are shown on the sheet. And then the expenditure changes were a little bit larger. We increased projected expenditures by $280,717 for those items listed. If you don't have any questions, that would complete the budget process for the year upon your approval of it.
So what did you do with the two? I noted two things from what you reported earlier, the fact that tax revenue was 100.4. So that had a bump up. And then the foundation formula not quite as expected going down some. So are those two changes, the up and the down, are they accounted for in this?
In the proposed budget?
Yeah, in the proposed, or would that be a correction that we deal with beyond tonight?
So the, all of the revenue that came in that I spoke to came in after the culmination of this document. So our budget for the current year, as reflected in this document, does not reflect any changes to current year revenue. And as far as how that informs next year's budget, the, as I stated, we typically budget the tax revenue based on historical collection values, which were still right at 98%, which is what I budgeted for for next year, is a collection rate of 98%. And then if that changes as we collect in January, February, and March, we will do a budget amendment to reflect those changes. Foundation formula, we'll just have a small deficit in this year's budget for that line item. And we did, if you'll recall, we had that discussion about whether to full-on budget what the state allocated versus what we know we're going to get or suspect we're going to get. And based on the state of the state, as proven by what we got this year, revenues are sluggish. So I did not change any revenue for the state. I left it flat at the current year SAT. And as revenues come in and show that we're going to get more than the current SAT, we will then do a budget amendment to reflect an increase in that SAT as it is earned.
Okay. Great, thank you. Other questions of Cindy?
I think this is the, kind of the same question. I'm just making sure in my head, just because the decrease in IDEA Part B revenue of 90,000 is different from the 1.6 that you're talking, that you talked about earlier? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
The 1.6 million are. The 1.6 million are already spent expenditures for the current year.
Okay.
As you know, with IDEA and other federal programs, we are reimbursed on the rate that we spend. So those are simply reimbursements of items that we've always spent this year. That $90,000 is a decrease in our allocation from this year to next year. When we budget for the coming year, we typically budget based on the current year allocation until we know for sure what that allocation is going to be. We did receive that allocation in time to correct the document. Okay. Great, thank you.
I move the board adopt the 2025-2026 district budget.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, curriculum approval is item 6.2.
Yeah, you saw this last month, as it relates to presentation of our facts, our family and consumer sciences, IT, and then business curriculum. And so wanted to again bring that to you this evening for your consideration. It is an action item. I don't know, Dr. Moore, if there's anything to add from your vantage point?
No real changes, and doing everything to compensate.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? I just continue to be so impressed with all of the opportunities for high school classes that we offer. I'm very jealous.
Do you want to go back to high school?
Not really, but.
Just a second. I move the board adopt the facts, IT, business curriculum as presented.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven is new business.
A few new business items, a couple of which are reoccurring annual action items. So 7.1 is our community engagement plan. You'll recall, recall that a couple of years ago, that became a requirement within our state. And so we worked to create that with our district leadership team. Plan that you have presented to you this evening has very few changes, other than some dates, updates there. So we'd present that to you this evening for your consideration.
Just to point the board, Karen, I know that you mentioned a couple of times ago that you wanted us to go through the...
You know what? I think I did, but then we went to Summer Summit, and then the parliamentary lady that gives us all the...
Parliamentary.
Yeah, the parliamentarian that is one of five uber-parliamentarians or something in the whole country said, "We don't have to do it that way." So we're good, but thank you for doing it.
Why is the uber-parliamentarian?
Do we have one of those? She lives in Alabama, though.
From South Carolina.
We checked her out. So no, we can, we can have to... But thank you. Does anybody have discussion?
No.
Okay.
I move the board approve the LPS community engagement plan.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item 7.2 is what, professional development?
Another annually required item. Want to thank Dr. Moore, as well as our professional development committee, for the work that they do in support of our staff and their professional learning needs. So what you have shared with you this evening in your board packet is the plan for 25-26 that is also informed based on a needs assessment, in terms of what our community needs, what our professional learning needs to look like as we move forward. So we present that to you this evening for your consideration. Anything to add to that, Dr. Moore?
If you're interested, the needs of the document is really the links on the webpage, page 12, that includes the district's service schedule, the... ...the calendar, the calendar for the year, personal council representative, all the information there. Pretty much has some focus here based on what we, what our work was with the professional development council.
I like reading the survey, like which sections and what kind of feedback there was from different, yeah.
Free service schedule is the last piece on there, if you want to see that, it's also on the district website, but you'll notice we do have the keynote speaker this year. We've also given quite a bit of time back to the teachers in the classroom this year that they've taken.
Was this the keynote speaker that we heard? Oh.
No names, but that's great.
Thank you.
Good job. Excellent. Well, then I move the board approve the 2025-2026. All just for that.
Second.
Otherwise, no go.
You didn't say yes to the speaker.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Absolutely.
Karen? Motion carries.
All right, what's the handbook, 7.3?
Yeah, 7.3 is a culmination of work over the course of this year, to update our 25-26 student handbooks and readying for next year. Right out of the gate, we know we will have changes to these handbooks as we, again, wrap up from the legislative session, work with Missouri School Board Association as it relates to sample draft policies that we'll have an opportunity to look at. Some of you may recall, in past years, we would hold on the handbook until the 11th hour and approve it in August, which was a little bit of, caused some stress. And so we, we kind of started that process earlier in the spring to try to get it sooner, to get the information. All that said, it creates a challenge in terms of looking at the previous legislative session and folding pieces in. So we have had some instances of needing to addend it, or create addendums or amendments to the handbooks. So they are pretty close to final, knowing that we will change them and provide additional information based on what we find from MSBA, but just wanted to mention that. Anything to add, Dr. Moore, as it relates to the handbooks for 25-26?
I just have a question about the information that's contained in those. I know, I think, I believe that students have to say, like, "I read this," or "I received this," something when they log in at some point, at least high schoolers. Do we highlight things that are, that have changed, that parents and students maybe need to be more aware of, like, I don't know, like cell phones or something? I mean, like, is there going to be an introductory thing that says, "Hey, pay attention to this, this is new and different?"
Yes, we spoke to that specifically, that was one we spoke to last week with our principals at our retreat, and we looked through the new policy and talked to each component of it, and said that we're waiting for MSBA to come out for the policy, but we actually highlighted some of the pieces about, you know, having something in, you know, did you have something in your classroom to hold cell phones, you know, should you allow them out during instruction, what would that look like? The KAs, we don't allow them at all, so it's not really an issue, but at the high schools, and then enforcing it is an issue. You know, and so then what does that look like, and how do you start the year off with reinforcing that and telling them that, you know, how this changes, what has been done, what that looks like? But yeah, so we, we talked about that, what that looks like, and then how we have to make sure that we hit that in every classroom with every student.
Yeah, I think that's the part where it gets confusing, is it's enforced in one and not the other, and then it just kind of settles down.
And that's the consistency across any, any policy, right, in terms of that consistent enforcement. I think to your point, messaging is key.
Yeah.
With some of these changes that are coming, both for staff, in terms of what's it look like in the classroom, to student expectations, but then certainly, certainly parents.
Yeah.
Right, so it's on multiple levels. For those that have been around a while, particularly educators, we did this about 20 years ago, in terms of cell phones first kind of popping up, right? And came up with policies, and came up with enforcements, and what you can do and what you can't do. So it's a little bit of a look back, and the biggest challenge is the enforcement piece, right? And I'll get a little bit more granular, given that you have K through eight that is used to the policy. Again, so long as it's being consistently enforced, your bigger challenge ends up being with some of those upperclassmen who have had different expectations, who now are kind of being fitted back into what they experienced when they were in middle school. So I think that's kind of that targeted focus among the whole district, but certainly with those older students, so.
Do they understand the why? I mean, do the older students, the upperclassmen understand the why?
I think that's going to be varied. You're going to have varied, you know, understanding of it, perceptions of it, right? That's, again, the opportunity to message, as to, okay, why are we doing this? We're doing this for some very explicit purposes legislatively from the governor's office. But really, it's both kind of the academic piece, but then it's also the mental health piece, right? I was reading something earlier today that narrowed it down to those two factors, in terms of an effort to try to improve performance, but then also to help with the mental health piece. And just socialization, that would probably be the third one in my mind, to make sure that we message home to all of those various stakeholders.
I feel like they're kind of aware of those things. I mean, I don't think that they would deny those, they might not like it, but...
Sure.
I mean, for kids, as someone who just denied a screen time request on my watch from a child, I don't know that the why is going to necessarily matter, but...
It's going to be varied, for sure.
I am thankful that you all agree when you get this done.
Yeah.
And where school starts, I totally get the addendums that happen, right? Even in the workplace, we get a handbook at the beginning of the year, and it changes throughout the year. So I don't think that's an issue. But I appreciate this.
Agreed.
I wonder if we should work toward a, a video presentation of the handbook, some type of AI type of, some content, the idea that a 14-year-old's going to sit down with this and read through it word for word. I think we're kidding ourselves. If it could be boiled into a video that could be looked at, and on their own device, you would know if the video had been played, I think that would be more evidence than saying, "Did you look at the handbook?"
Did you look at it, Dan? I'm just wondering.
When I was a teenager?
No, when you were a parent.
Oh. I skimmed through the pieces that I was interested in.
Exactly.
Dan's the guy that reads user agreements.
Like you're putting me out of business, man.
You also have class meetings that occur, keep that in mind, right? So an incoming group of, like, the freshmen this next year, they're going to go a little bit more in-depth.
Right. I just wonder if it could be a nice project in some...
For sure. I think, I think the more you can...
Some class to work on.
The more you can vary, like, the access to it and information sharing, the better off you'll be. My point with that freshman group is you're going to go into a little bit more detail with them. Hopefully, not always the case, but by the time you get to your junior seniors, like, okay, guys, reminders, right? Don't forget this, don't forget, oh, and this is new, right? So like, you have slideshows, presentations put together for each of those classes, and our administrators do a good job of going through that relevant content. You going to add something, Dr. Moore?
At the middle school with having advisory, several of them do that, they'll put together videos or like PowerPoint, handbook presentations. And they, like, whoever's in charge of advisory will give that out and say, "Everybody today goes through this part of the handbook, and then everybody tomorrow goes through this part of it," so that they know that everybody's getting the same thing. So I do think that at the high school level, what we may need to do is just have somebody put something together to say, "Everybody at this time is showing this," you know, and just to make sure that everybody gets the same, the same message.
Right.
I mean, part of the difficulty is, in those handbooks, you're balancing the information that you want to provide, but also the information that we legally have to provide so they get...
In language that was specific enough to be...
Okay, well, was that enough discussion?
You have a motion?
I move the board approve the 2025-2026 student handbooks.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
7.4 meal prices.
Another item in readying for next year is our 25-26 list of meal prices. You have a description, as well as kind of a little bit of a look back on what we've done over the last several years as it relates to increases. But that, I'll let you handle that, Mr. Anderson, as far as speaking more specifically to that.
And I'll just be brief here, of course, if you have questions, as we've discussed in years past, this is kind of the annual look at this, and it really is, it's pretty formulaic, and I think that's spelled out well by the nutrition services team here in these few paragraphs. And basically, it's just a compliance issue, it's requirements and regulations, and then we have this equity tool that has to get applied into it as well. So at the end of that process, you'll see some increases that are proposed for next school year. Milk is increasing by a nickel. Student breakfasts, breakfasts will also increase by five cents, student lunches by 10 cents, adult breakfast by 15 cents, and adult lunches by 25. And just as a quick aside, the adult meals are, that's really our discretion, we want to do with, with that. So we typically put a little bit more on that to help balance out the rest of the load. But basically, that's how that adds up, and we just appreciate your consideration of this tonight. Happy to take any questions.
Again, this is a calculation from USDA on how much we can actually charge. We're not looking to make money off of this, it's, we're covering the cost.
No discussion?
I move the board approve the 2025-2026 meal prices.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
7.5, our lease purchase agreements.
You have two lease purchase agreements, one for transportation and one for Schneider Electric. And so we initially thought we might have these ready for action this evening. These are just informational, you'll see these again as we enter into the month of Ju, uh, July, in our July board meeting with additional information, but we'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson.
And apologize, we did, we were hopeful that this was going to come together on Friday, and then had some understanding that this morning we might have that kind of completion information. That being said, this will be just first read, and we'll bring it back next month. The first agreement is with respect to the purchase of 15 buses. We've done this periodically for those that have been around. It's just a great tool for us, rather than incur the full cost in front of that massive purchase, it allows us to kind of spread it out over time. And then, of course, with Cindy's help and the budgeting process, we just allocate what that, that amount is for each year over the term of lease, and it works pretty well for us. And that just kind of depletes, I guess, the capital we'd spend on other capital needs, so it all just kind of works together. So that is about two and a half million to cover 15 buses. I think they're nearing completion and will soon be delivered. This extra few weeks here, we're going to have to kind of work through how to do that, but I think we'll, we'll figure that out here, working with both Cindy and Jason Frye. The other item, this is related to a project that we've been sharing with you for some time now, is with respect to an ESCO, kind of performance contract, related to energy efficiency savings that can be realized by enhancements and improvements. I had a good question earlier today from the board on, much of this first phase is related to LED work. As you might recall, the bond has quite a bit of LED work that has already taken place, about three and a half million. This is the remaining balance of that, about five and a half million. At one point, we had hoped to cover all of the LED work within the bond schedule. The issue at, well, it was about a year ago now, that Evergy, you had, every indication Evergy was going to continue with the abatement structure that they had in place, which was very generous, and, and within the course of a month, it just went away. And so really affected, because we had to time out the work. It took a lot of energy to...
That was good.
To plan out the work so as not to interfere with all the schools over the course of the school year and through the summer. So the other part of this that's important is that the LED, it's nice to capture that because that's where some real energy savings can be realized pretty quickly. This Phase 1 work will really be what is the focus of what will fund Phase 2, which is replacements of the roofs at South Valley Discovery. Those were really anxious, those were almost impossible to fund out of our capital plan because they're so expensive. This will allow us to kind of take those two really big projects off the capital list, which will be a big help to the department and to the district. So anyway, with all that said, this is our first read. If you have any questions, certainly be happy to answer them, and then we'll bring both of these for next month for formal consideration.
Just trying to understand, then, the process for this work is, we're paying for the replacements as capital?
It's basically a loan, right? We're paying, we're paying for the LED work, so that $5.5 million. Go ahead.
Yeah, so that $5.5 million is an annual?
No.
That's, that's a.
That's the amount that we need to drive the construction of the work.
Right. And then what's, but what's, what's the 15-year, I guess, piece of it?
It'll be reimbursement of that $5.5 million, almost like the bus lease I described previously. It'll be an allocation in the capital plan every year to pay down that loan over that term. And then what's, the unique twist here is we'll be tracking, I don't know how we'll account for all this, but we'll be tracking the realized energy savings from, on the electric side of things that we anticipate coming off of all the LED improvements.
And that's part of the statutory mechanism for selecting ESCOs is that? You realize, you're supposed to realize the entirety of the savings we cannot pay up to.
We, the district did an ESCO, we've done two. We did one at sunset, just about a year or two after we started 1450, with respect to kind of putting more smarter systems into our HVAC systems across the district. Prior to that, we did a lighting enhancement, which was moving from one, I can't remember now what it was, like T5 to T3, I can't remember. But it was an energy savings to replace all the lighting systems across the district. Yeah, that's right, and the sensors, yeah. And that was probably like 20, 15 years ago.
Other questions or discussion?
That was really helpful. I also appreciated the discussion around the choice of lenders, too.
We'll see that again.
We've replaced some buildings with LEDs, so we've got some rough estimate on the cost savings in those buildings for extracurriculars.
We have, we've not, I mean, it's still pretty fresh. So I don't think we've got to annualize what we were expecting. But the thing that's a little bit of a challenge, it all kind of washes out. It's our operating budget anyway. But yeah, we are, and we have talked about credency. We definitely have to do it as part of this ESCO, but we have, we have to discuss the putting in systems for what we've already done with the $3.5 million to start tracking that. And making sure with rate increases that we're kind of accounting for that, so there's a little nuance, right?
Yeah, that's a great, yeah, the actual, whatever usage measure, there's some red costs.
Thank you.
Again, we'll see that later on in the month of July.
And what would be the, one more question, what would be the, what's the period of getting all this work done?
This first round, I had this about a month ago, we walked through this.
Because I remember, there are a lot of buildings listed.
There are, and it's difficult, right? Because you have to get in when we're not being a nuisance. I think this is our first round. I want to say it'll take almost two years. But let me follow up on that and make sure, yeah.
And the envelope stuff's later, right?
I'm sorry?
The envelope, like the roofs and the outside.
Yeah, that'll come later, and we'll have another discussion just like this, probably next year at this time, for that next phase.
So the $5 million we would recognize is over that, we'd save $5 million from that 15-year term.
15 years.
Yes, essentially, yeah.
7.6, board policy update.
So you have two sections here. One is policies for review presented to you this evening for first read. Again, we'll have another round of policy updates in July to accompany this, some of which we may want to act on first read, given the proximity to the start of the school year. The second piece is administrative procedures that accompany those prior policies. So we just present those to you this evening. If you have questions, comments, can provide any clarification on anything, feel free to reach out to us between now and our July board meeting, so we'll see those again as well. Okay?
7.7, contracts and purchases.
I'll turn that over to Mr. Anderson as well to talk through a couple of items.
Two emergency or expedited actions that we had to take this past few weeks. The first is with vendor bragging strategies, and it was with respect to an agreement for services for hearing for sped department. And then the second one is with Canva within the technology department, and it was a subscription for integration for classes and programming. And again, just usually we like to time these so that they're not brought to you in this manner, but both of these kind of had to get through more quickly to make sure that we were ready to go for the start of the school year. I move the board approve the emergency contracts and purchases as presented.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, legislation and advocacy. We've talked a little bit about session, intercession, and special session, and changes, so. Does anybody want to talk about summer summit?
Not really.
There's some changes to the governance award, a lot.
Angie, all of that.
Well, and it's on, it's on the MSBA site, and I would think, maybe at a later study session, we will need to talk about that because they've moved away from, they've moved more towards doing team events. And so.
Bowling?
Could be.
Synchronized swimming.
So they have like three sections, like, like learning, growing, and leading.
Yeah, and they've really kind of refocused on how you achieve that. And going from having, you know, and if your board doesn't do something as a group, they're individualists, but if you do it individual, it takes more than the group. It's best if you've got the papers in front of you so we can look at it and talk about it.
Yeah, we can do that.
It's like.
Bowling.
If you explain the foundation formula, you win.
They did, there are, I mean, I have just a picture of it on my phone, and it was a lot more teamwork than it was individual work.
Yeah, and I think, my personal opinion is, I counted, there are 500-plus school districts in the state of Missouri. I don't know how many of them belong to MSBA, but let's just say 200. I don't know if that's true. Out of that, there were 24 districts who were awarded a governance award.
So let's make it more difficult?
So you want to make it smaller?
Actually, it's not.
Well, I know it's not, but it's like.
But, but I really think that they're going after, if you're ever at a conference and you listen to what smaller school districts do, I mean, in a small town, the entire board's somewhere, and they're, you know, selling lemonade at Walmart or whatever.
Are they following the policy?
No, because it's posted.
Okay.
But.
MSBA used to have multiple categories, right? And so you could get leadership recognition for a variety of things.
Yeah, right.
And then they went away from that to a more streamlined approach. Now it seems like we're going back to categories. Is that true?
There's, well, and the thing with the categories is, what Jen was reading about what those three categories is, is also reflected in advanced master and distinction awards. So.
For the individuals.
They correlate for the individuals and the team awards, so. So yeah, it's interesting. I thought it was a good conference. There were things that they talked about that I, aside from that, that was good. And the hotel had air conditioning, and we didn't have to wait for an hour in line to check in. So I consider that a bonus right there. Of course, however, the caveat is, there were no elevators. No, you didn't use the steps. They put you on the service elevator, so, just a small.
I think that one.
For those of us who got there earlier.
One of the sessions that I did was, well, the title of it was AI in Action: Practical Tools for School Board Members. But what was fun about it, it was interactive, and so he would bring up like Grok, or he would bring up perplexity, or he would bring up different things, and we worked in like pairs or fours and kind of, we worked through what each of those is useful for, and I have a whole list of them. And so we kind of just got like, like a little glimpse of how these tools can all be used, all to say that I don't know if that's what we do for our educators or everyone, like, this is how you would, like, this is the program you would use for this type of work, and this is the type of program you use for this type of work. So that was, that was a really cool session.
Karen Rogers presented, in case you didn't know that.
Really?
Panelist. I was on a panel.
You were on a panel, which means you presented.
There's a difference between a panelist and a presenter.
Well, there were lots of presenters on that panel.
There was a panel presentation on, let's see, the importance of language, that words matter, and then just the importance of how language matters in fair education practically. So I was, a couple of folks from around the state, the Retner School District, Park Hill. We had a lawyer from MSBA. I'm missing somebody. Oh, someone from St. Joseph's School. It was kind of a mixture of board members and school superintendent, a instructional leadership coach, we call them instructional coaches, it's some different name in a different district, and then, so it was a good conference. I think the other big takeaway is that I think there are more people watching these than we think. I mean, I think there is a really interesting, there's a lot of research going on about the connection between boards and superintendents, and just that people watch these board meetings, and I find it, I find this time with all of you valuable, and the engagement that we have as a board. And so I hope we all continue to do that, so.
Because people are watching, or they'll look it up.
That's right, so.
Search it up.
All right.
I know.
That, I will undertake a motion unless anybody has any other comments. I move the board adjourned.
Second.
I don't know if that's the words, but that's the way to speak it up.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Gates, thanks for hanging out with us tonight.
Can anyone tell me what was going on at Margaritaville? Was there something at Margaritaville last week for schools? I don't know why I had that on my calendar, but I drove there, but that's not where I was supposed to be. But I don't know how I got on my calendar. I mean, not like Denise's calendar, like, I put it on my calendar, but I don't know why.